Okay, so as I said, Commissioner Lee should be joining us momentarily. He just had to coordinate something in his office quickly. So if it's okay with commissioners, I'll just go ahead and get started on the meeting. So this is the the November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Planning Commission's Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee. The intention of this meeting is to get your feedback on the recommendation of steering committee members that will be presented to the full Planning Commission for appointment. Steering Committee, as a reminder, is going to provide a community of voices that will help us be thoughtful, comprehensive about our outreach. Make sure we're processing information correctly, that we're getting to a product that is reflective of our community conversations. You'll recall that we conducted an application online. It was extended gratefully, which really resulted in a lot more applicants. We ended up with about one hundred and thirteen applicants, which was a really significant bump from where the initial deadline was. So thanks for the feedback on that. But before we get started into that, we do have an opportunity for public comment. So if anybody is interested in addressing the Planning Commission Subcommittee, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. And we'll provide you with a three-minute opportunity to share any thoughts or comments with the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee. Do have some attendees, so I'm just gonna give it a minute here if anybody is processing or looking for their mouse. Right, seeing them, let's get to, let's get to. So as a reminder, you are a subcommittee. You don't take any action, but I am looking for your feedback to help craft the recommendation that ultimately I'll be presenting to the full Planning Commission. I really appreciate your thought through this. Just some notes to start. As I said, we have, we had about one hundred and thirteen applicants. I, I want to just acknowledge that as part of the survey information, we asked for a lot of demographic data. I committed to applicants that I would not be publicly pushing that demographic data out. I want to be clear, it is public information. If somebody requested through the Freedom of Information Act, it would be accessible. And I've, I've delineated that to any applicants, but that's the reason that all of the materials have not been shared in your packet with all that information. And thus my note as well. I know that's sort of a challenge for some of the people who might be watching this process. Once we get to the Planning Commission, I'm gonna be, of course, including the more specific information about those that we are recommending. Where it stands now, as I said, out of one hundred and thirteen applications, my recommendation to, to the Planning Commission is to appoint twelve steering committee members from this applicant pool. I would recommend that we do additional outreach to identify another two to three steering committee members. Ideally, from wards one and two, and ideally that identifies either Asian American or Hispanic. Those are two, we didn't get any applicants that, that self-identified as Asian American, and that's a pretty significant population in our, our community, about, I think seventeen percent. So I think that would be an important perspective for us to, to find a voice at that table. And then also, I would recommend that we appoint two planning commissioners. I think it's really helpful. Not unlike council member Dish provides some consistency from the Planning Commission to city council. I think likewise, it would be helpful to have a couple of planning commissioners on the steering committee to help convey the conversation that happens to the full planning commission when those opportunities arise. I've shared with you a couple of, well, a lot of data, but basically in two formats. I wanted to provide you with the opportunity where you could either approach this however you desire. I tried to anonymize one version of that, so you could really look at qualifications, background, demographic information. And then I just provided you the full information of all the applicant information that we received. I am recommending a series of twelve committees that I've identified, and I can go through those in more detail if you'd like. But those twelve would represent about a third male and two-thirds female steering committee, which relates to about, of a city population, that's about fifty-fifty. It would represent about thirty-three percent of the committee, and this is again, just the twelve spots. I want to be clear, it doesn't include any additional members. Thirty-three percent of the committee would be black, which correlates to about seven percent of the city population. Eight percent of the committee would be Hispanic, although I think that's really one individual. That's why I identified that as potentially another opportunity for outreach, which the city's population is about five percent. And currently, the committee has no Asian American self-identified, and we have, again, seventeen percent of our population reflected that in census data. Nine of the recommended committee members reside in the city, three do not. This was a big conversation of topic leading up to this. Not only people who live here, but what are the workers who work in the city? People who might aspire to live here and find it challenging. Those are some of the voices that might be represented there. Half of the recommended steering committees do work in the city. And then I attempted to provide a pretty wide-ranging age representation. So I've provided, I've provided this in detail, but these twelve members represent less, I'll undercount zero, in fact, of anybody under fourteen years of age. It represents an overcount of those in the fifteen to nineteen-year age bracket. It represents an undercount of those in the twenty to twenty-nine-year age bracket. Again, this is comparing the committee to population. An overcount of those in the thirty to thirty-nine-year age category. About an even count for those in the forty to forty-nine-year category, an undercount in those fifty to fifty-nine, an overcount in those sixty to sixty-nine, and about an even for those seventy years or older in our community. Five percent of the population identifies as having a disability, which is about twenty-five percent of the committee. And four committee members speak a language other than English at home. The last aspect I did, and this is reflected in sort of that outreach prioritization for maybe some additional numbers from Ward one and two. Of those twelve members, we have three members each from wards three, four, and five, one from Ward one, and no members from Ward two. And so that's why I think some additional outreach in those geographies would be appropriate. Like I said, I've shared that detail, so you, as the committee, have that information of who those twelve candidates are. I guess I, at this point, I can stop and pause and, again, don't have a particularly structured conversation established for you. My goal to walk away from this is some validation that this seems right, like to present this to the full Planning Commission, or if you'd like me to do some additional analysis or thoughts about modifying this as it goes forward. So Charlie, I'll leave it to you if you want, if you're willing, now that you're back to sort of structure the conversation, and I'll do anything I can to answer questions.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to. Thank you. And I think we can just jump right into discussion at this point. Do any of the planning commissioners want to kick us off? Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone. Thank you.
Brett, thanks for putting all this together, especially the demographics. I'm pretty excited that three people from outside of the city are being recommended. I think I'd be interested in the future of knowing how they even found out to apply, since they don't live here. Questions about future outreach to Ward one and Ward two residents, like how are you? Look, what's the process for that? Like, do they need, are we, would we have them go through, like, to open up, like, another application process for that? Like, how would this, would we still, would, would you proceed with these twelve if we are all in agreement to the full planning commission? And then, like, any additions kind of come later? Like, what are you thinking about process for that piece?
No, I don't, I don't envision another application process. I feel like we did a lot of, I, I feel like we got a lot of applicants, which suggested that, I think, our outreach and our communication had some degree of success. Probably what I would likely do is start some more targeted outreach in those wards. Some of that might be talking to the council representatives in the, in those wards to identify connections or groups that they might help us to satisfy some of those missing pieces. I've actually already done that with some other colleagues here at the city to maybe start exploring some names. Ideally, I would have some of those, we would have some conversations with some of those individuals, maybe over the next week or two, answering questions they have, and then ideally include some of those names by the time this progresses to the full Planning Commission on the fourteenth, ideally. I know that's a pretty tight timer, timeframe. But that's ideally how it would work in my, in my perspective. Again, not a new application round, targeted outreach. Let's find some voices that we think would be really productive, bring some of those perspectives that we don't have in this group. And I would accompany those recommendations when it comes to the full plan.
So this is gonna be really specific. My neighborhood, so I'm in the King neighborhood. We have a lot of Asian people that live in my neighborhood. So like, we have a WhatsApp group, so I can send out information to that group. But I just need you to tell me, like, what do I say? Who do they contact? Does it go through me? Like Lynn and Lynn, Councilmember Song and Councilmember Watson also both live in my neighborhood. So if I put that out, they will see that too, and can help push.
I appreciate that. At this point, I don't know if that's how we approach her. I would make that same connection through our council members. I wanted to sort of this step, and then if you were in agreement that that definitely seems like a gap, I was frankly just gonna work my best to answer that question and put together a more full board, rather than, obviously, I don't have those names to you now, so.
No, I know, but like, if I got you names.
Pick you up on that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any other thoughts on this particular process?
Just one thing, I guess I, I'd like to say, as part of this, I, you know, I want to be clear. We did have some other applicants from Ward one and Ward two. It's not like we didn't have any applicants. When I was trying to find a balance of a wide range of perspectives, backgrounds, oh, some of the candidates in those areas were very qualified, but frankly, some of those candidates are voices that I hear from, the Planning Commission hears from, the council hears from, and so I, I just wanna, I just wanna name that. There were definitely some very qualified candidates, not to say that nobody applied from those areas. But I really feel that I've, that this steering committee represents a lot of new voices that I personally haven't had a lot of interaction with, which, again, when I see a more familiar voice, it's not that that's not important. I, I feel like there is access there, and we, we will still be able to embrace those perspectives as this process moves forward. I was really excited with the volume of new names here that I, I didn't, I don't always hear at our public hearings, and I don't always see correspondence from. And so I, I just want to name that. It's not that nobody from Ward one or two was interested in this. That was a bit of the balance that I was trying to find when I was putting together these recommendations.
Thank you, Brad. Hey, just for, for my edification, and just as a reset, tell me again, just really briefly, the actual, the objective of this particular steering committee, so that we, we want to make sure it's balanced, but also Interface Studios is gonna be doing a lot of outreach to make sure that we're inclusive. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page regarding the objective of the steering committee.
Want to be clear, the, the role of it might evolve over time, but here is how it's structured in our work plan to date. One, it's to make sure that we are successful in our outreach. Part of the reason of trying to put together a diverse steering committee is that that's gonna give us diverse voices to make sure that we are replicating that when we're soliciting feedback and ideas from our community. And so we want those voices at the table from a wide variety of places and perspectives to say, you know, I, I am connected to this community that I'm not hearing a lot of voices for, and that'll help flag our outreach to make sure that we might have to have a higher level of touch for that. We might have to find the way to connect with that area, that neighborhood, that group that we haven't been successful, and we might have to cater. So that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is a bit of a technical sounding board. When we are having those conversations with the community about what we're hearing, what are we hearing for priorities? What are we hearing for strategies? It is a voice to make sure that we don't get too caught up in plannerly land and that we're being faithful, and we're processing, and we're prioritizing the things in an accurate way. It gives another set of voices the opportunity, other than us just putting that down to paper and sharing it, to say, well, that's not, you know, maybe that's not what we were hearing. I was hearing it as this priority. So it helps provide that perspective. It also helps eventually, is going to help us validate how we prioritize things in the comprehensive plan. Once we get that set of ideas and concepts and recommendations to realize where we want to be, how do we prioritize those in a time perspective or a resource allocation perspective? Bringing those voices to the implementation plan of this is gonna be helpful. And then finally, the actual product itself. Is this a product that is accessible? Does it help communicate what we're trying to communicate before it gets adopted by you and ultimately the city council? So they have a lot of different roles and touchpoints throughout that, and that could expand. The other thing I will share is, this is not something that we have necessarily approached in this application, but we've talked about. The next piece of this applicant pool is might be trying to find some of those community ambassadors. We're actually gonna be hiring some people as part of our community outreach, and so this might also be a great place for us to start identifying who some of those connectors would be, to actually sort of bring them into a more engaged way to actually help conduct some of that outreach, as opposed to just bringing the idea of who we are getting or who we aren't hearing from.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I think that's really helpful. So, and I think it's helpful to keep in mind it's gonna evolve over time. So, and then also, just to make sure that we're setting context, right now, we've had, we have staff recommendation on the board. We have some of the data. This is going to Planning Commission on the seventeenth, or, or whatever that meeting is. Hold on. What's the day? We keep having him on Wednesdays, it's the fourteenth. So, um, so, uh, and then the steering committee formally gets appointed by the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Planning Commission's body will take the action to appoint these people to function in that role, and then we're gonna start scheduling the kickoff meeting with X.
Okay, got it. Great, perfect. That helps to set good context for me. Do we have any other commissioners that want to proffer their thoughts? Donal?
I just wanted to make sure I heard what your plan was for the lack of representation for the seventeen percent of the community. So can you just tell me what, what you hope to accomplish between now and the fourteenth on that?
To add to the steering committee that identifies as Asian American, ideally live in Ward two, Ward one, and at sort of pending the twelve that you're seeing today with those names, and then that'll company revise sort of demographic comparisons when it goes to the full planning commission. I'll probably do that by some initial conversations with some of the city council members in that area to help, help me and help me connect with who those individuals might be. But I will do it in that method, rather than another sort of open application.
Okay, and from the demographic information you shared, there is a representative from Ward one, but none from Ward two, right? Okay, great, thanks. Those were my questions.
Thanks, Donal. Lisa?
Maybe I'm just kinda thinking in terms of planning commissioners, who's in what ward? Sarah, you saw, like, you're in two. Not to sign anybody up for this.
Don't sign me up for this.
If that's helpful, too. I, I don't know in context if that is actually necessary or not, but I mean, I'm in five. I'm overrepresented, I would say, in a lot of different ways, but I, I don't know if wards are that primary, but they might be helpful contexts. I don't know what ward everyone is in.
Crafted, not me, kind of.
I'm in four, so it looks like there's three people from Ward four, just.
Yeah, we, I, I think there's four, actually. So I think we are quite represented in Ward four.
I think I'm now in Ward three, but I lived in Ward one longer by a lot. Might be happy to do it if there's some other volunteers, but I might either way.
I think we would be. Yeah, I did want to ask, like, how are we gonna do that? Are we gonna nominate people? Are people that are not on this committee on the table for that, or is it mostly from this committee?
I think members of this committee would be great.
Okay.
But I honestly need structure to process. Like, if we could come out of this with two volunteers, I think that'd be terrific.
I'll do whatever, guys. Are these meetings virtual?
They'll probably be a combination of virtual and.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Okay.
Lisa?
If it's preferred or not preferred, that I would be on that committee, so let me know. Preferred by you.
Um, I, you're a commissioner like anybody else. I, I guess Sadira has expressed a, that's the first voice I said, like, I'm really excited about this. Sarah Hammerschmidt is Ward two, which would potentially add some perspective there. There could be more commissioners, but that was, I think, two is a reasonable amount to, to translate.
Yeah, I think it, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing to have. Because I get to speak about this a lot, right? So.
Yeah, and you, at the, you will get to speak at the planning and the council table, which is not. So maybe it does make sense to keep you off of this a little.
I think not preferred, yeah.
By the way, I'm sorry, it feels like my camera's in HD, which nobody wants to see, so I'm sorry about that.
No, no, it's all good, Brett. For, for what it's worth, we said, there, there's also that element of like continuity, but you're also right, you have a lot of touchpoints on it. So I think that, that's definitely something to consider. Sadira, do you have something to add? I see a hand there.
Apparently, I'm Ward five now. I got mixed up, so I was Ward one for.
Gotcha. And then Lisa, did you have a comment, Sally?
Yeah, I was, are we looking relative to race, ethnicity, and age in this next round, too? Since there are some kind of disproportionate representation?
Yeah. Hey, that was in my, that was, we can, I really think Asian American is a Asian American Ward two. That seems to me like the primary missing gap. If we could also identify candidates who meet some of those other sort of underrepresented, I think that's terrific. But I want to be clear, like, this is, as I was going through this initial recommendation, you know, we're talking about humans, and you can't necessarily find the perfect candidate that can be, you know, as much as I would like to script this out and say, like, well, this person's gonna be a Ward two, self-identified as Hispanic and age twenty to twenty-nine, it just, that's, that's not gonna work. And so, yes, but I, I want to be clear, I think my prime, primary goal would be self-identified as Asian American and Ward two. I think those are gaps that we need to address.
Okay. No, that's helpful. I mean, and I was like, I know we didn't get into like the nuance of age, but that twenty to forty range, like, it's like the ratios are switched, and I don't know if anybody's like on the edge of one side or the other, right? Who's twenty-nine versus thirty? There could be people that, those two seem to balance out somewhat, too. So I feel more comfortable at those. I think it's just like the fifty to seventy, those ones are a bit skewed differently. But I do appreciate, it's also helpful, good to see the renters versus ownership that we are seeing a good handful of renters on this committee as well.
Is that for you? Did I?
No, but spreadsheets do.
Yeah, it's about, do you have those numbers handy with?
I think it's about fifty-fifty.
Yeah, I think that sounds right. I want to say the city is about sixty percent rental, but, so.
Seven rent. And then there's one live with parents and the remainder owned.
A little bit higher, probably more consistent with the population.
Yeah, that's, 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 I think, great metrics in that regard, too.
Yeah, thanks for getting such a good group of renters. I think it's rare that we have renters be the dominant voice in these kinds of conversations, even though they are the majority of the folks that reside in the city. So I think that, that, that's a well-done for you and the team on getting a makeup that way.
Well done to our community who applied. Right, I, um, I'm, I guess I'm hearing that this recommendation seems palatable, resonant with the group. So when this goes to the Planning Commission, like I said, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, this will be, include the names of those individuals. I, like I said, I hope to identify a few additional ones that won't be thrown in an open application, but probably some more targeted outreach to identify some people that can help fill some of those gaps. I'm gonna put down Commissioners Clark and Hammerschmidt as Planning Commission representatives to this group. And ideally, this will be approved or modified and approved at your meeting on the fourteenth, and we'll be off to the races.
Okay, I think that sounds good, and I, and Brett, I think it'll be helpful just introduction at, at the Planning Commission to say, hey, we were looking for a diverse technical, you know, expertise, dedication to the city, you know, because as I look at this spreadsheet, kind of one of the things that I, in the back of my head, it's like we had infinite time. I'd love to see kind of a quantitative weighting schema of like, okay, how have we looked to be progressive in our demographic, you know, prescription? How, what does it look like, again, from socioeconomic strata? How, how have we really captured that? And to basically assign like a, like a ratio to make sure that we were, we are actually, in fact, because a lot of this isn't qualitative so far, right? And we're kind of like matching, just as we're seeing, but to take kind of a much more rigorous, somewhat just, hey, assign a weighted scoring mechanism to ensure that we did, in fact, you know, again, get the most diverse technically gifted and, and experienced, and then that, you know, has a dedication in the city. So I, but to, to run that kind of like, again, creating numerical strings based on these qualitative answers, it might take a little more time than, you know, the, the fourteenth. But, but I think a lot of that's been kind of embodied in your process, so I, I think that, that's helpful to know. And I, I do feel that at least, at least myself, I'm comfortable with the recommendations that you've made. I don't, and I'm not gonna speak for the other commissioners, but, but wanted to say, if there is an element of being able to transform this into a weighted schema to say, hey, we've done kind of a best match as far as the, the value sets that we put forth, that would be helpful, just to ensure that there was, it's just a gut check against any kind of like unknown biases that we might have during a qualitative, you know, assignment. So not, not to, you know, bring up more work, but that's just my two cents.
I just want to be honest. I don't, the notion of me putting together, and I, I just, I started from the premise of like, I wanted to do something like that, and I quickly started structuring. Even just identifying what those things are, let alone how they're weighted or how they're prioritized. There's quite a bit of, not, I don't mean this in a bad way, but it's just quite a bit of subjectivity, like how I structured that might be quite different from you.
Yeah.
But I think one of the things that, just as you're talking about that, you know, like, for example, the ownership and renter is not something that I highlighted in my initial recommendations. Think, like, telling the story, like, this, this group actually also has a pretty diverse income background, and so I, I think I could do, I'll aspire to do a little bit more to sort of help answer that question, but you were talking, I don't know if you're talking about as far as candidates or process, but I want to be clear from a technical competency perspective. There's a lot of new names on here that I, I, you know, it's hard. I want to be clear, I haven't gone through and interviewed one hundred and thirteen candidates, but we have a lot of expertise on your team, even for people who are bringing relatively inexperienced perspective to the steering committee. That's kind of the thing that I'm excited about here, is that we can help with the technical, we can help post the questions, we can help act on the directions we get. The thing I'm excited about, and frankly, a little is unknown, is that by having a lot of new voices, you know, how's the board gonna function? And we'll find out. So, but, but from a technical competency, I want to be clear, I wasn't looking for the, the top twelve people who have been through this before.
Sure.
It's in my perspective, as opposed to some of the other.
Gotcha, yep. And that's what we're relying on Interface for, right? It's the technical expertise, so, yeah. Okay, yep, that sounds good to me. Do we have any other thoughts from other commissioners?
Mr. Dish?
Thank you. Just a brief reaction in terms of what I saw when I looked through your chosen people was that I'd be reading along about the people who said that they couldn't afford a house in Ann Arbor, and then I would get to their income, and they would say a hundred and forty-five to two hundred thousand dollars, and I'd be like, wow, okay. Yeah, this is a really unaffordable place if people who are making that kind of money, which is big money. I mean, I don't know how many of our jobs in this town may give you that much money. I mean, I don't know how many of our jobs in this town make, give you that much money. So, um, I thought that that, that was, you, you guys mentioned income diversity, and I thought that that was very, because we did have, there is quite a range. But there is a very common message that comes from almost everybody in there, is that Ann Arbor is becoming unaffordable. One thing, didn't, I'm not gonna say it worried me, but I did note that many people are mentioning how hard it is to buy a house in Ann Arbor, and that is a problem that we can't solve. I don't think there's any policy that we can use to solve that problem. So, I, I hope that they won't be too sad when they discover that. I mean, short of, you know, having like a mandatory rotation, everybody who has a single family home has to leave it after either X number of years or at age X. There, you know, because we don't have more land, and how this is gonna look is different than what the dream is, and the things that the building, the, the expansion of the city in the sixties and seventies made possible. So, you know, I don't know what to do with that, I'm just putting it out there. And I don't think that, I, I'm not saying that I don't think we should have those folks, I'm just saying that that's gonna be a difficult. Those are gonna be difficult conversations that we're gonna have in this process.
Lisa?
I mean, maybe I'll just clarify, and maybe it's a lexicon thing, but condos are homes. So density does create ownership as well, if that's an objective. But, um, I guess I was wondering, I don't know if this needs to be a public report, but like, you have the population, and then it would be nice, like, the number of application versus committee to see of the hundred some what the demographics of people who put in their effort, you know, in interest. Because I think that might play through those ratios relative to other engagement events and things to understand what's tweaked and working better, and where we still can, need to continue to work on outreach throughout this process.
Yeah, I can do that.
Awesome.
Okay, um, anybody else? Uh, all right, Brett, do you think, oh, Sadira?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know you mentioned earlier about like some criteria, like what kind of weighting factors. I think that in a, you know, perfect world, that would also be really helpful, just looking through the selected list along with the other. Um, and there's just so many, um, good, different candidates from just a variety backgrounds, and it would be kind of nice to see a little more into the rationale on what went into the selected people. I just wanted to reiterate that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Sadira, and, um, yeah, I think that may be what the, the larger commission has to, um, ask, and Donell, did you have something to add to that?
I did, it's just a couple of questions from the data we got. Brett, in the, the spreadsheet, I'm counting thirteen, but you've been referring to twelve. Am I double counting someone? It's thirteen on both spreadsheets. Because that's how I think Wuhan and I were wrong on Ward four, I counted four, but your summary said three. And then I just looked at it again, and both spreadsheets have thirteen participants.
I'm sorry, yeah, my intention, uh, applicant number twenty-five.
Ah, okay, okay.
Apologies.
Okay. Okay, so you're not including applicant twenty-five?
Twenty-five was not included in the summary that I provided you.
But i- is applicant twenty-five gonna stay on the committee or no?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other last thoughts? If not, Brett, do you think you have enough about Sadir?
In future iterations, like, if we get the list, is it possible to, to like have it blind with names? I, I noticed the one with the recommended applicants has the list of names. I just, just a thought if we want to do that or not.
Yeah, you should. Two versions, one that didn't have names and one that did, so you could approach it how you.
Yeah, but once you add names into the mix, doesn't it get a little bit? I don't know if there's room there for, I don't know.
Sadir, uh, the, the spreadsheet titled No Names Complants, some of the applicant data, shouldn't, I don't see names.
Yeah, so there's the other one that has, it's like the recommended versus the all applicants. And so it has all the names. I was just wondering if the selection was gonna be blind with names, or if we were leaving them on there. So it's like a a pretty practiced term of names from
Yeah.
Application pools.
So I, so when we were talking about this, that's one of the things we talked about, and I think mirror reflection was that I was gonna provide anonymous, and then this committee actually asked for all the data. So, including, and so I did, that was my approach to say like, how, oh, to give you the ability to sort of approach it however you, you were most comfortable with. And again, I want to be clear, this is the planning commission's decision. If these names don't seem rational or whatever, that's part of this feedback, but I, I get what you're saying. And I want to be honest, I did look at names when I was, um, looking at it for the reason that I mentioned that. There are a lot of great candidates here on this list that have a lot of expertise, and I, they, I hear from them a lot. Planning commission hears from them a lot, the city council hears from them a lot, and they will continue to have their voices known, I think, in a pretty easy way. And so I, I just want to be clear, that was part of how I looked at it, but wanted to provide to you the ability to approach it either way.
Yeah, I get that. I was, for you, it makes sense to be looking at the names, it's just something like a broader practice for like DEI. I know, like, in hiring practices, and I know it's not exactly the same scenario, but removing the names is a pretty basic thing for once you have a committee looking at it, but that's just my thoughts, so I'll let it go.
We'll get that.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. I didn't even know there was a tab with all the names. I only saw the two spreadsheets and I looked at the first tab. So you, like, I was like, oh, she talked about, it's like, oh, it's right there. So I hadn't even looked at it until you just mentioned it on the call, but I, your point is still well taken.
Thank you. I'm good, yeah. Fortunately, I do feel like I have some feedback, so.
Cool.
Um, I'm gonna, um, my, what I'm hearing is a little bit more rationale about the group that I'm recommending. I ideally identify some additional names. I've got the two council or the planning commission representatives that will be recommended to the steering committee. And I'm also going to do a comparison, not only of the city's demographic data as a whole and the committee, but also the entirety of the applicant pool, so I'll share both. Uh, so that's how I envision presenting this information to the full planning commission.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. All right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. We'll close this. Have a good one.